It's just an habit, right?
Well, it didn't work when it was over there, right?
Yeah.
My mother's ninety-three, she's barely walking.
Good, here's Bee.
And Bee's here, so we're all set. Oh, this is a baby.
Did you like your agenda?
This is right, I couldn't remember if you had married. Well, I had, I had written it out, I had written it down in my life, so, yeah, but I took it in. When you leave, right? And I thought, you know, I've raised three hogs, you give, or three hogs.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
And I'm going to be selling.
Garden Bloom was a great weekend.
Good.
They do a beautiful job.
Does it, do you think it helps your market at all?
Oh, definitely.
Oh, good.
Definitely does.
How fun.
It helps the whole town.
Good.
What does, so the Garden Bloom, the garden block puts on, it brings a tremendous number of people to town and fills the restaurants.
Yeah, I think it's the one we're getting.
Yeah, oh, at least. No, we had a great weekend.
Good. On my way home, I could have bought.
Yeah.
I think they have a shed in the town that is.
Garage up there?
Yes, I do.
Interesting.
Your text all of a sudden?
You're quite welcome.
I'm most positive. So, if I should check, I'll go to that one over there.
Right, right. Alrighty.
That's ours.
Thank you.
You may already have those.
A nice clean copy like that.
Was this your idea, or?
Uh, well, at the last meeting, I thought we were supposed to put out a new one with the changes that we made and then we'd review them and make sure that they.
Okay, oh, this is the review?
This is the new, this is the totally.
I understand now.
Okay, let's hope.
I'm slow.
It's in red. Well, actually, mine are in red, I don't know how she printed them. They may be, sometimes they come out in a lighter color, let me look at them.
Yeah, you can see, yeah, come on, different color.
Good. Maybe it's just a lighter color.
Page six, for example, Larry. There's not many changes, I guess, of the first few pages.
Not a lot of changes, great.
And these are all things you feel I knew.
Six oh two. No, it's. Yeah, the cross out, yeah. Right, that's light. Oh, okay, I got it, you got it real light, yeah. It's lighter.
Because it comes out in red, on the original, it comes out in red, but if they don't print it in color, well.
I don't have any copies of the minutes.
Oh, that's too bad, I have a copy.
I have a copies?
Yeah, I got a copy, I think, too.
If we could crank out seven.
Sure.
Julie told me she was making all the copies, though I just assumed.
We'll rip it up, I'll get it.
Alrighty, super, thanks.
Oh, look at all the interested parties who are out.
This is like fake cards.
Kevin, how did you come up with such a catchy name?
Uh, you know what, it's a long story. But then you told me that we had bought in our college, you know, it was totally known as Heartbreak Hotel.
So it wasn't that Elvis has been singing on that property?
I sort of inherited, yeah, so. Sometimes I like showed up.
Long as you're not gonna have a plaque up, Elvis left here.
The Heartbreak Hotel is where a lot of people used to rent rooms, right, or?
Probably.
Oh, now.
Is that the black area, really? Okay.
I guess that was, like, it was either like an old lodge or.
Yeah, it was an old lodge or something. Yeah. Is that the one they're gonna rip down, it looks like, or? No, not the first house.
No.
The next.
The next one, yeah.
The first one's gonna fall down and sit over again, right?
Right, yeah, so that was, people called that part, they were talking about this, so.
Did you find that out?
I didn't look, I just called it the Nelson.
I couldn't.
Yeah, but Emerson, Emerson. But thank you.
I didn't think it was Ralph Waldo.
No, it's not Ralph Waldo.
But I know it was Emerson. I will, like, comment, how about that?
We're gonna be slightly delayed starting because one member had to jump home, he'll be right back.
Is Sarah coming tonight?
No.
No, she isn't. I emailed her my thing today, which was a little late, so.
Well, she said she's got most of the material and she's working on it, so.
She said that for the next meeting, she should have the rough draft.
Oh, good.
That's a screen.
That's good, it's a collar.
You're on chill, Bee.
Wonderful.
Your boy.
Who would have had?
He's just consulting on his own. He was, he was working for a company out of Boston. But he's, he's going through a very nasty divorce right now.
Thank you.
Excuse me, my dogs, uh, my dogs are obviously here, by the way. My dogs have been in the car for a long time.
Yeah, they're gone.
They drove up from the city today. And they're very well behaved, they're all very, I thought, remind us, I thought, man.
I don't think it would be appropriate to have them in. Not that they'd be any trouble, but we never know how other people react to dogs.
Right.
In general. So, I would say no, but if you'd like to let them out, scoot around for a minute, we have time.
Yeah, there should be some time.
You'll probably have plenty of time.
And yours.
Thank you, sir. I found that in my papers.
That's interesting.
Goodness, what's this? Oh, have fun. That's great. It's within two oh four. Wow. Oh, current use and a forest. And a forest. Okay. Isn't that interesting? Well, current use in oh two, two thousand and two? So that's changed a bit. On the back, it says spring of oh four. That's changed a bit. But it's probably increased from decreased at about the same rate, maybe. Yeah, I wouldn't say it changed.
So, it changed a lot, probably.
But it gives you some. So how'd you get this, John, is this recently sent around even though it's back in two thousand and four? Okay, Bee.
Bee, yeah.
See, while I was on the planning board for many, many years, and I've been going through things. I found some interesting things. Great. That people forget.
I'll open the meeting. We're doing. In attendance.
Oh, okay, Larry Seaver?
Here.
Dick Bennett?
Yeah.
Scott Badger?
Yes.
Bee Davis?
Yeah.
Kathleen Darby here. And John Allen and Betsy Harding.
Here.
All right, we're just right, everybody will be voting. Let me look at the minutes of the last meeting.
Do I get all of it? Double sided, I think.
Okay, any corrections, additions? Comments? Let's get it. I think a motion to adjut the minutes.
Oh, second.
Moved in second, long favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Public comments. Everybody here is on the agenda? June I. Would you like to add something to the?
Yeah, I just, um, I was planning on coming here tonight earlier than we can call you, but I just, I had another meeting that got canceled. So, um, so it's made to make the meeting tonight, but I was, I wanted to bring up some, something about setbacks and non-conforming houses in the Town of Jackson. Just as the town building inspector, I've had a lot of people come to me and, you know, asking what they could do with the property. And, you know, lots of these houses turn out to be non-conforming houses because of the setback. And I don't know what the number is in this town, but there are plenty of houses that are non-conforming. And I think a lot of these properties, people would like to do something for their house. You know, expand or improve or whatever. And without, um, you know, without the setbacks being changed, a lot of these places, either, you know, all they can do is like re-side or put their windows in, but they can't expand them. And, you know, it could get very complicated, but I think just straightforward, I think I like the setbacks right now as a building inspector as for, for new construction. But for houses that were put back, you know, I don't know what the date would be, but, you know, something where the setbacks could be from fifty feet down to a smaller number. And I'm only talking about front setbacks between the road and the, and the actual structure. And I can give you plenty of examples of, you know, like this, of, you know, things that people want to do. And then examples of here in town that houses that were non-conforming and somehow they went to the ZVA and got passed and now look at the house, you know what I'm saying? The house is beautiful because of the improvements that they did. And, I mean, I think we've all seen, there's plenty and plenty of houses in this town that were built back in the, you know, in those lots in the seventies that are non-conforming. And, you know, they're gonna be like that until they sell a house or, you know, place gets torn down or whatever else. But it's just something to think about. You know, I could come back and put plenty more meeting with, you know, mine.
Okay, well, we'll put it into the meeting tonight to discuss.
Okay.
If you feel like staying on, we'll certainly talk about whether you're here or not.
Yeah, just to get a start on this.
I can't get you ahead of the people that signed up earlier.
No, that's all right. Actually, I'm very interested to stay here and listen to something that's going on here.
Which will probably also concern you.
Well, yeah, it could be your night, yeah, okay.
Eventually. Okay, so we have the, first is the review.
Excuse me, Dick.
Yeah.
I just had a quick one, if I could.
Yeah.
Um, at our selectmen's meeting today, it was mentioned and suggested that, you know, it would be a good idea to get all the boards together at some point. Kind of give a check, check in to see how everything's going and make some goals or whatever. And, um, didn't know if you had any input on that or what the board might think here. You know, getting the ZVA, the Conservation Commission, you know, following up on what Rob did basically last year. Probably the best timing would be probably during one of our meetings, because this is probably the least flexible of all the meetings, I think, for people to get them together, so. Maybe plan something in the future to meet in this time slot might be a good idea, but open to suggestions, obviously.
Okay.
Especially because it's often directly following a selectmen's meeting, so you know.
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, but also you guys probably have the least amount of flexibility being the largest board.
We're always an inflexible board.
Yeah. Well, just have that many, yeah, more people involved, yeah.
Okay.
I've written you down, discussed.
All right, thank you.
Discuss or discuss?
A little bit of both.
But now we have the review of the voluntary merger.
Just to follow on what John was saying, the ZVA would very much like to have that meeting facilitated as well.
Yeah, I mentioned it.
Review of the voluntary merger application for twenty-four Tucker Lane. Our nine lot eleven to be merged with an unnumbered lot comprising the access drive. Anybody here for that one?
Glad, I'm glad to speak about it, if anyone has any questions or can explain it.
Is this it?
That, yes, that is it.
And this?
Yeah, that's a larger half of the subdivision as a whole.
So, you could explain to us what?
Sure.
Have the gray house?
Uh, it is the lot right up in the back, the Sorghans used to own for a long time, if you remember those guys.
So this is Cartanacho.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, this is called Tucker Lane, right in here.
Oh, okay.
And, um, the Hardings actually, I mean, Betsy lived probably about right around here.
Set the house, it's in bad shape.
Uh, it was in fairly bad shape when we bought it over the winter, and then we've done a renovation on the house and added a log structure next to the house. On this lot, lot number three, right here. And so, for, it turns out that we discovered that no one, this was, was an unnumbered lot of, uh, that, uh, was owned by the Stevens for years and years and years, and they did not know it. And anyways, we bought it from them in hopes to merge this lot with this lot here. And, uh, once it's merged, it would look, you know, the lot would start down here at the road and actually go up the side of the stone wall. And then follow along the entirety of the road and then take in lot number three and then surround there.
And Kevin, why do you not want it to be sort of a communal road?
Um, I mean, yeah, and one for, for septic purposes, here, we applied for a two-bedroom septic system and with, we've done the calculations through, um, our septic engineer. And if, by merging the two lots together, um, it will allow us to put the septic system here and have it become a three-bedroom septic system.
What happens to the right-of-way for access? This lot, this lot is landlocked, this lot is landlocked.
Yeah.
You know, that would still exist in the deed.
Are those, what lots are already built on?
This one here has a home on it. And, this, so I guess it would be one, three. And seven, if that counts.
Well, they have their own access here.
Right, right.
And they also have road frontage.
Yeah, yep, this lot here is owned by the same, the same owner. But, you know, they would by their deed have right to use this.
Okay, in order to do any development here, we're supposed to have frontage. On a town spec road. I'm wondering how that works out? Because this is more than two dwelling units, possibility. They're already subdivided, so. Uh, I, I have some hesitation here of putting this into a private lot.
So is Tucker Lane on, what kind of road is it? Is it a?
It's a gravel, just a, your typical gravel. You know, camp-style road, you know.
But who owns it, does the town own it, or?
No.
Watch it, I own it.
I, I own it now with, in LLC.
No, it's a private road.
Yeah. Yep, so, you know, right now, I own this lot, you know, this year, and we own that. It's never been, um, well, it's always been privately owned.
So it's never come up before?
Correct, because it's, all these, in everyone's deed year, they have, well, in the lots that need to be serviced by this road, they have an easement to use the road. And this here lot, too?
Yes, then I don't see how this land area can be added to lot three to help the septic for the volume of, uh, land required.
Yeah. I'm not a licensed septic designer, so.
Well, you'd be adding this lot.
You'd be, we'd be adding, this is all, you know, quantifiable land according to.
Yeah.
You know, so that's.
So this was a subdivision approved when, do you, was there a date on the map?
Probably in nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-eight, I think is when it was, when it was approved.
But so long as the easement stands, does it, does it change anything to merge them?
I don't know.
It's still, it's still the same situation of, you know, basically a lot that doesn't have the frontage.
But there is the state law that says in order for a place to be developed, so if you're working with a land, a parcel where you're rebuilding what was there or something other than, then you're not developing it. But if there are lots that are not yet constructed, I wonder if you don't have to have.
Right, but my question was, does it matter whether, I mean, Kevin already owns this land and so, but there's an easement, you know, for access. And so whether this gets merged into these, the easement doesn't change. And so, yes, you might still have to build a road, sufficient standards to develop, you know, to build on this. But whether this places.
Belongs to that, doesn't matter.
Right, exactly.
I think that's a good point.
I don't see how this can be both the road right-of-way and land for septic purposes for this lot.
Why not? I mean, the state of New Hampshire grants easements on state highways for septic, quantitative, ver.
Do we exclude easements when you do the calculation?
There's many state roads in the state of New Hampshire that a property owner is granted an easement for septic purposes over a route, over West Side Road or other, I mean, that's not quite applicable to this, but it's an easement. I mean, like Scott just said, why would, if you had an easement to walk over somebody's land to cut firewood on somebody's back, on your back lot, that easement area would be counted as a quantifiable land area for septic purposes. I mean, this is. Okay. You know, I feel like we're bettering the neighborhood and we're trying to follow all of the guidelines that the Town of Jackson has laid out for us. And by, I took the extra step of buying this road so that, one, the people that owned it would be not burdened with it and it was useful to us. And when my septic engineer said, well, you know, now you can apply for a three-bedroom septic design, we've got off-site water, our well is over here, so we're piping in our water by easement. And, uh, I feel like it's a net gain for the property and the Town of Jackson. We're doing everything properly.
It's a net gain for the property, certainly. Is this going to become a town, a town spec road?
No.
How many houses is it going to serve?
Well, you know.
At this point?
At this point, it's gonna serve three. This is, yeah, this lot is, I think, owned in common between, you know, lot one and two are owned by the same folks. And I think actually lots seven, five, and this one family actually may own all of these.
But again, since it means nothing really changes up for us to use.
Right.
If any of the lots that are undeveloped or don't have a structure on them, you're going to, or someone else is gonna build, then it might need to become a town spec road.
So this is the only, number three is the only one that you own?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, in terms of.
And that has a structure on it now?
Yes, yep, built in the late sixties.
Okay, this has a structure on it?
This does, yeah.
This has a structure on it?
Yeah.
But that's owned by the two?
One and two are owned by the same.
But it's still, they're two separate lots, I believe so, yeah. Okay, so there's structure, structure. And then this house. This is undeveloped?
Yes.
Undeveloped?
Yes.
Undeveloped?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't make that much difference who owns something. They're still separate lots.
You know what, I've got a copy of the tax map in my folder. Is that map from nineteen sixty-six? I know some of those lots may have been voluntarily merged.
Well, there was a time when the town asked anybody who.
Right.
Care to go ahead and.
Yep, so actually, the town represents lot seven now as all of these lots together.
So that's one lot?
According to this, yeah.
So really now there's just two structures on this.
Which is what?
Access. Two structures.
One.
Two.
Two. Yeah.
They have their, they have road frontage.
Different.
Right.
And they also have their own access. There's two structures on the driveway.
That's, that's okay.
That's acceptable in the Town of Jackson.
Though it's someone.
If a third dwelling unit were to be developed, that would have to come up to be a town spec road.
If you want to put it on here or here?
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if the owners of what is now called lot seven. Yeah.
Uh, I thought just maybe this one was the only one left divided, but you said this is all.
Yeah, and this is a snapshot of the, of the Jackson tax map.
So it's just, there's these three lots and this is one lot now? So if, if these folks wanted to sell off that and develop it.
Yeah.
This would have to become a town spec road. Right now, it can be a town path.
But I think in terms of septic, you know, you could say this probably doesn't contribute much to the actual working of the septic.
No.
But technically. But according to our zoning, I think.
It is within the parameters of the square footage. You have to admit it's a stretch to. The dr- I agree, yeah, okay. But technically, I. But technically, I think it's there.
Right.
This evening, we're looking for.
A voluntary merger of the two lots.
Is that application in?
Yes.
Yeah, is this a separate lot, Kevin?
It is not, no, it's just, uh, it's encompassed within this.
So that little jug handle can, whatever.
Is part of the septic.
Part of the, what would be the, the request to m- you know, merge the two together.
So there's some, you know, I'm sure there's some amount of land that does more directly contribute.
Yeah, that does help.
Well, I don't have, on a voluntary merger, I think we still have to do butters.
No.
No?
I believe we don't. If it, um, I'm quite sure it's not a requirement to have a butters, cause we did a whole lot of them when the state encouraged this.
So is there any application?
There is an application and they submitted it to me and I assumed would also bring it. But I obviously should have copied the one that they sent to me, so I'm sorry. But I'm, uh, I'll look it up, but I'm quite sure a voluntary merger does not require a butter review.
It seems like there is one sort of special exception to that or something in general, I don't think it does.
So we just accept the survey that's on the paper?
Yeah, Betsy asked me to, to provide something that had meets and bounds and, and so we've, we've given the, the deeds to both. This survey that was approved by the town of Jackson and our application, and I think there was a thirty-five dollar check or something like that.
I didn't get that?
Okay.
Something like that.
They're probably not gonna give it to me.
Um, seventy-nine and. Um. Okay, um.
Any extra copies of the new. I don't see any. Any extras of the new ones?
I believe there's still some in the cabinet over there.
Any last?
They may have been out for the ZVA, I think they're in a, they were in a cardboard box.
Charlie.
You know, if the ZVA, have they got many useful.
It's, it's our, say, six, seventy-four, thirty.
So it doesn't require any, any butter notice?
No, okay. Um, no, no, I, I. Well, why don't we?
It says except for such merger would create a violation of then existing ordinances or regulations. All such requests shall be approved and no public hearing or notice shall be required.
Then I think we should just take a simple vote. And then when I, I'll get the application from Betsy or the office, wherever it is. And we'll sign it up and I think it's, well, we'll find out from the vote. Well said.
Any other, can I?
Any other questions coming forward on this? Okay, so I'd like to have a, uh.
There's a motion that we accept the voluntary merger, although is it conditional on an application or do we have the actual application?
I do have the application, I just have it on my computer.
I think we can.
And you, you submitted the check to the town offices, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I have the motion that we accept the voluntary merger, please.
I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There it is.
I'm abstaining just cause I don't understand, I haven't really dealt with it.
Okay, we have a vote with one, a six, four, one abstention.
Thank you.
Preliminary application for Nestle Nook. Jim Reins.
Yes, that is me.
Huh.
Do you want me to, I brought an easel, but I'd be, I'd happy to put it on the table, please.
Um, put it up on the easel, that would be nice. And then our fans could see it also.
Boarding, really interested in the.
Yep.
I can't see that scar.
You put your glasses on, I'll take one.
So, um, my name is Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering for the record.
Secretary.
Thank you very much.
Cards, would you have one?
Great.
And I'm here this evening, uh, representing, uh, Old Jackson Village Incorporated. Robert Seer, the president, was, is with me in his desire to convert the existing property into the condominium form of ownership. Parcel is identified as tax map, uh, our fourteen lot five. Uh, it's about sixty-three and a half acres. Uh, it has, uh, this is the Ellis River here, twenty-two hundred and fifty feet of frontage roughly. Accesses off of the end of Dinsmore Road, which is right here. It's zoned village, uh, and rural residential, and also the river, uh, conservation overlay district. There are presently three residential structures up here that are, uh, fourteen rental units. Upper floors and lower floors. And there are a bunch of commercial buildings that, uh, are related to the activities that go on with the, the skating and the horse rides and different things. And of course, the, the Nestle Inn was, was in this location, which burned on November third, two thousand and thirteen. And Robert also has his own individual home up here, a separate two acre lot of record. And that, that is, actually it has two kitchens in it and it's a, it's effectively a, a two family home, although it's used as a single family residence. Uh, his desire is to, uh, in accordance with section nine point ten of your ordinance, to convert it to condominium form of ownership in such a fashion that these existing, um, fourteen units would actually just become seven residential units. So they're, instead of being, you know, there's, there's rental units upstairs and downstairs, now the, the unit would be the actual dividing balls in here, so these are, you know, two, two and three.
So it'd be up and down?
They'd be two.
It, it would be, yeah, they, the, a unit owner would own, like, in, in this instance, they'd own half of the building upstairs and down. This would own the other half. Same with the middle one, on this end one, it's, it's three, it would become three units. Right now, there's six rental units in it. Also, uh, wanna create some sort of commercial unit so that, uh, the, the activities that have gone on here could continue, uh, in their, in their, uh, present configuration, uh, the way they do. And, uh, Robert had planned, this is the shaded area down here has been glated and a well was drilled and you have some very spectacular views up the river and down the river. And it's how the, the, uh, uh, river conservation district would like to be able to allow for a future, uh, you know, unit here not yet constructed. Also, uh, he's considering the idea potentially of, um, taking this, this structure, which, as I said, has two kitchens and is set up sort of as a two family now, merging that acreage onto this and, um, making two more units there. That, that's not a definite. And the reason we're here in a preliminary form is, A, to let the planning board know sort of what the thinking is and to get some, some input from the planning board before we start the actual planning process. Uh, Dinsmore Road was accepted as a town road on March twelfth, nineteen sixty-three. And on June seventeenth, nineteen eighty-two, the town received a deed for Dinsmore Road from Robert and Carla Kenny. And, uh, the interesting part about the road is it, it's, uh, the, the description of the deed that the town got in the, the warrant article, it was approved in sixty-three, describes a center line of the road and it's ten feet on either side plus a cul-de-sac. So it's, it's a twenty foot wide road. So there's no opportunity to make it a, you know, a fifty foot road or anything else, but it is a town road. So since we're reducing the number of units here from, from rental units from seven to, I mean, from fourteen to seven dwelling units, we've lost ten bedrooms in the, uh, by Nestle Nook being burned. And we're only considering the possibility of adding one or, and possibly two units here, so there could be a total of, uh, seven, nine, ten, uh, residential dwelling units and one commercial on this acreage. The first question is, since Dinsmore Road is a, is a town road and we're, you know, not reducing the, effectively the use that's on it now, would there, would you think that the planning board would think that there was any need for, uh, improvements to Dinsmore Road? So that, that's one question that I'm gonna head for the board.
I think we'd bring the road agent in to talk about that. I mean, I, I'd wanna hear his input. Either this way.
Consequently, the road agent is also the fire chief, which, you know, my biggest concern would be, you know, trucks getting in and out safely and, but I don't see why they wouldn't on a twenty foot road.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, uh, obviously there was a fire that they did a very good job of saving a lot of the structure the, the way it is now, so.
And is the idea of a commercial structure, is that a new structure or just a commercial enterprise?
Well, there are. It's a commercial enterprise, so the unit boundary, the, the unit, you know, traditionally condominiums, a lot of times, we think of them as the s- as the structure. But it could be a polygon on the ground and the as-built would be the actual monuments on the ground and the unit boundaries would be sort of like a lot. But that would be the unit and on the unit, there could be structures and paths and, you know, the, the Grand Lake and, you know, that kinda stuff could all be, uh, within the, the limits of the unit. And, you know, presently right now, like, in the, in this structure, there are ticket sales that go on for some of the, the activities that go on and so that, that's, that, those are the type of things that would exist on that, on that commercial unit.
And it's, now, is that within the village district?
Uh, the, uh, I'll, I'll use a, a plan that the planning board has seen before, so you, you get a sense. This was one that Thorn's office had put together because there was a boundary line adjustment when these units were built. The road got over onto Robert's personal lot, so a boundary line adjustment had to be done, which the board approved. But this is the, the boundary between the village district and the resi- rural residential district, because here, here's Route sixteen. So that's the five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
So i- i- that's a, in answer to your question, now we flip this around a little bit. These units are actually, or these, these structures are in the, uh, rural residential zone.
And the, and the ones above the, the actual condo unit?
They're, they're probably, uh, the line probably, it.
It went through there somewhere.
It, it probably goes something like this, roughly.
Well, they're conform, I mean, that.
Right, yeah, they're residential, so it's an arm issue.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the, uh, commercial enterprise, but it's an existing commercial enterprise.
Exactly, yeah.
And has been for quite a long time.
Well, yeah, it was, what, was the Robin?
Robin, yeah.
In there, something prior to, so it's been around for a while.
Yes, it has. But I, just for the technical, uh, aspect, that is curious.
Uh, another thing, the, the board, I, I, because we haven't done a lot of work in Jackson since Wentworth Resort, I don't know the tenure of, of the, the members on the board, but I, um, I know that in the nineties there was more rental units approved over here. They got septic approval, I don't know, Jackson probably didn't have site plan at the time, so I'm not sure.
Still don't.
Still don't, okay, so, so I, no site plan approval, but the state granted, uh, um, septic approvals for them. Uh, some, some of these, this path that you see here, this roadway actually was brought into the building area. So a, a bunch of high intensity soil mapping was done at the time. And my question, the second question that I have is, given the fact that we have some historic high intensity soil mapping that was done by a company that's now out of business, but we, we have the plans that they signed and sealed at the time, would the board think that since we're reducing the number of units, that would be acceptable to submit that data? Or could we use county soil mapping as part of the subdivision application bolstered by that historic hiss mapping that has been done? Wondering if the board felt that that was a reasonable request?
I'm just gonna add that you're also losing a kitchen, which is part of your, uh, septic design criteria.
Yes.
So you're losing six kitchens? Seven kitchen?
Got you, fourteen units.
Right, so that's.
And there's, there's Jacuzzis in these that are going to be going in as well because of those septic, the septic systems that were state approved here were sized for Jacuzzis to be discharged when they, when they wanted to recycle.
Into the septic.
Into the septic.
Oh wow.
So they're, they're significantly larger than if they weren't sized for that.
Right.
What are the, uh, the activities that would be part of the commercial operation?
Um, I don't, what presently goes on. Slid rides, uh, a really big pot of, um, Nestle Nook and, uh, ice skating. We resentfully, we resentfully the, um.
Do you still have prospect land?
No.
No.
No, um, I stopped that when, uh, um, eight-year-old girl woke her back yesterday. And so I just felt it was too risky.
But it's those types of uses, you just wanna be able to have those continue?
Yes.
I ask, cause we don't allow amusement parks and I wouldn't call it a doing an amusement park, but depending on what types of activities go on, whether there's, you know, a merry-go-round, for example, would be.
Right, we're not looking for water slides and merry-go-rouds and carousels and.
Not at all, I.
No.
No, no.
So these are ex- already accepted septic systems and you're actually reducing the use of them? I, I don't see why we'd have a concern.
I don't.
Does it matter that they're going from rental to residential?
No.
It's still, they're.
And there's still, there's still.
Yeah.
It's still residential's, you know, they, they size them based on bedrooms.
Yeah.
Uh, or.
Residential.
Yeah. The o- the only time when you, the, the oddity in, in state septic design is that a one bedroom is really considered a bedroom and a half. And then as soon as you get to two bedrooms, they're all, it's seventy, I mean, a hundred and fifty gallons per day per bedroom, but a one bedroom is two twenty-five, so it's, that, that accounts for the kitchen and the laundry and things that would, or.
So anybody have any questions?
So is the, is the, does that seem reasonable to use the historic and the county mapping as part of any submittal we make to you for subdivision? Cause you, your subdivision regulations require hiss mapping and if we don't have to, that, and that requires two foot interval topography that, and all of those, you know, things.
But you'll have the document.
We'll, we'll have the historic data.
Right.
And, and, and we will ob- obviously have the county mapping as well.
And the only one you're building is down below.
Would only be down here.
You certainly have the land area.
Right, and it's, and it, and may not, may not build it, but wanna, it's such a spectacular location, wanna preserve the ability.
Well, I think we'd need the mapping for that one, wouldn't we?
Yeah, and, and we have that because.
And the access driveway to it and.
Yep, that was all planned when, when these were done, so that, that would not be an, an issue to give you, you know, show how that it could be. an issue to give you, you know, show how that it could be reached.
What do we require for a driveway from, this is to the board, from Dinsmore down to there, what would we require? Is it a driveway, or is it a, is it, what, what were you gonna put for housing there? One house?
Just, just one, yeah, one, one dwelling.
After the condominiums, whatever road access you have for that, and that'd have to be up to specs.
Yeah, I mean, there, there'll be, once you, Dinsmore Road, of course, being the town road, once you get in here, I would think it would probably be the fire department to, because they're not, they're not roads, they're not town roads, and town-
Well, it's a private road, but it has to be town specs for anything over two dwelling units. So, once you go to the third dwelling unit, then you need, even if it's a private road, it has to be the town specs.
So, if, if the, so presently, all of this exists, if he didn't add this, could, could he just convert what's, what's there with no physical improvements?
I guess, because-
They were already-
Right, that's, that's-
Not adding.
Right, so-
And the other lot, I would think, would just be a driveway.
Right, that's, that's kinda what I was thinking.
Right, and, and-
Right, okay.
You, you may live on a cow path if you care.
I mean, yeah, I understand.
And the tow plows to the end of Dinsmore, not beyond that?
That is correct, yeah, they, they, they put a cul-de-sac in, right here at the end, and they, that's where they plow to.
That's right.
The next question that I have for you is, town water that does come down Dinsmore Road stops about in this location. It may be more in this area, but this is presently served by a state-approved community water system. Could it continue to stay on that, at state level, but I just wanted to be sure that the board wouldn't require that it tie into town water into the- I didn't see any requirement in the regulations, but I-
I couldn't think so, it's an, it's an artesian system, right?
Yes.
And it has quite substantial water, I understood.
It does indeed, yeah, it's a true artesian, yeah.
Maybe we should backfeed the town system.
It, you, it could, I'll tell you, it's quite an artesian.
Yeah. I remember when the town upgraded and Ernie Mallett drilled the well way up somewhere else to help supplement the town system at the time. Um, those are the questions that I had for the board. I don't know if there's anything that the board has, you know, for, for-
Larry, questions?
And, and not that I can think of right now.
John?
Yeah?
B? Or he asked mine.
I asked mine, and I, I just don't see the stumble here.
Okay. I, I mean, it seems, it seems reasonable.
Agreeable project.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of my sense, but I'm obviously much more concerned about your sense.
Well, right.
Yeah, Robert, you have any questions I haven't asked?
Not really.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
All right, we'll wait for your application.
Okay, very good. All right, we ran on. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
You think the other guy was a liar?
Probably.
Discussion for our draft report distributed at June meeting.
Betsy, I have copies of your emails.
Okay, great.
If you want those.
Sure.
I brought-
Jerry, we have water here if you wanna stay and-
No, I'm going home to the locker.
You can bring that back and share it. I don't know if you brought copies yourself. And so, based on some of Betsy's comments, they adjusted the maps.
Good.
But I think Betsy felt that they didn't really improve the maps in their adjustments, but that's, I'll pass these around.
I'm a little at a loss having not been here.
John, can I have a copy of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
The PDI report is Planning Decisions Incorporated.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a report that was, um-
Joined.
Commissioned by the-
I have that.
The Regional Collaborative, and Betsy was at the-
The Regional Collaborative, I think, was, and, and the Housing Coalition of Mount Washington Valley had been involved with that also.
And so, it's, it's a report that basically goes through all the towns in, in the valley, in the part, um, looks at our zoning regulations, subdivision, et cetera, and then makes recommendations as to changes that we can make if we were interested in promoting, you know, development of certain types, whether it be commercial development, affordable housing development, et cetera. So, what I was hoping to do here was not really get into the recommendations, and I think there's a, a good discussion as well.
Yeah, which we need to at times, sometimes.
But, but first off, just make sure that the facts are correct, that when they say that Jackson has, you know, this particular regulation, that that in fact is-
Okay.
-our regulation. Just, they're starting from a, you know, a valid set of premises, and then we can have, you know, once they have any corrections, they'll rewrite the report or edit the report if necessary.
Oh, so it's not finalized?
No, it's a draft.
It's a PDI draft.
They're, they're waiting for any edits that we think ought to be made, they'll make those edits, those edits might or might not affect the recommendations, they'll then come up with some file recommendations, and I think that might be probably good for us to take a look at those and just see if they're good news to us. So, in any case, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here last month, so this discussion I filed for this month. In the meantime, Betsy came up with a couple of suggestions regarding the maps that they created regarding land development for development, and also included with the water, the town water goes. And they then edited the maps in the report, supposedly according to what Betsy suggested, but Betsy, you didn't, you know, they really-
Well, this new map seems much more accurate.
And that's, that's the newest one, right?
Great. Unfortunately, I'm sorry that they don't say the Wildcat River, they talk about the Salco River, which we don't happen to have. So, the Wildcat and the Ellis- Did you have those? Aren't shown, um, not that it really matters a lot.
Well, should I give you the copy of the map that you made?
Yes, and I passed-
Pass that around, where'd I go with that?
It's not this one, it's the one with arrows and little hash marks, yes.
That's it.
Well, I just wanted to make sure Betsy had, in case-
Okay, good. Thanks.
So, a copy of the-
Okay, I'll trade it to the other map, I just wanna look at that.
Oh, you bet.
So, a copy of the report itself, is that available?
It is, I did email it around.
Yeah, it's what we had last time, if you happened to have last one.
I wasn't at the meeting.
But, uh, so, I guess it was just emailed.
Yeah, you can re-mail it, if you like, but-
Yeah, would you, yeah, I don't recall seeing one from you.
I have, of course, only did I forget all the paperwork that I wanted to email, I have to throw back on me.
Oh, you emailed it to all of us?
Yeah.
At one point, yeah.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I emailed it to Dick and Sarah to then put on the agenda for last month's meeting.
Oh, 'cause I, I don't have a copy of it.
But I think, I thought Sarah then sent it around.
You can keep that one.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I may have some copies of that left.
Close, close, this is good.
I forgot to bring a copy.
So, that was some changes recommended, um, what we're at this point, I think.
Now, do they show the Wildcat River?
No, not on this most recently.
I don't see it.
See it from satellite pictures, but-
Chosen sixteen, but doesn't show Wildcat or the Ellis.
Right.
Either one.
But I don't know how significant that is, do they really need it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have the, you know, where the, the public water goes.
Yeah. But at one point, they were making a recommendation, I think, that we should be infilling, um, areas just to the north of Route sixteen A that goes across from sixteen over to the grammar school, making the assumption that there's a lot of open space there, but it's all constructed, it's either condos or golf course, and it's part of a whole approval. So, I made that clear in one email to them.
Yeah, I don't think we're changing that, I think they've used up the-
Yeah.
-area for the condominiums that went in there.
Right.
Quite a long time ago. I don't think we're gonna do a lot more development there.
There's just no more land available there, it's, the approvals are already granted.
These maps I just passed around, aren't these the ones that they edited and then you commented a second time?
Yeah, the original ones of these, I added in the arrows and stuff on this one, too, what my understanding is.
Right, it was just that, if I remember, you made some comments.
Yes.
Milan replied with these maps, and then you made some additional comments-
Exactly.
-suggesting that they hadn't quite gotten a couple of things.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I don't know.
He was also recommending that we develop a long valley crossroad.
It's not a nail.
There's not an opportunity. It's either water or conservation area, which we approved, what, last November or something, or other, they've put-
Right, the Kendall side is, oh, it's soured up.
Pretty well.
We've got quite a big beaver bog, and then we have a, well, the tennis courts, if they ever wanna put something in there, but then that's the river conservation district.
Yeah.
So, maybe the, uh, utility shed for the Christmas farm inn could be cleaned up.
But not a lot of people might wanna live there without plumbing. Okay, well, so it, it's not easy to get workhorse housing development here, but no reason why we can't, I think it's great that we've got it as part of our ordinance, and, you know, if, if somebody comes over with something that'll work, okay.
So, did anybody see, was it, had you had a look, any, any problems with the regulations in the subdivision, is there any regulations that they're asking for?
Just as an aside, for this worker housing idea, say if Robert Seer wanted to do a much more extensive development, we might have the leverage to say, okay, if you could create three, you know, worker housing-priced units for every town, or whatever is, you know, some formula, you know, that would be a place that we could have some impact on those worker housing, but just to expect that somehow some is gonna come in and buy land in Jackson and put up worker housing, it's not gonna work.
No, right, it's only through the incentive program that you're suggesting.
But if, there are scenarios that it could work.
There's no way we can force somebody to do it.
Not yet, you get a socialists and, you know.
But a lot of towns are also facing that same situation. We were coming back from Maine, we stopped at a restaurant, and we opened up this newspaper, was, first thing they were talking about was housing.
Yeah.
Um, I know over in the Lake George area, that's what they're talking about, housing, affordable housing, and it's all over the place, it isn't just here in Jackson.
Yep, it's an issue.
And there's, there's two types of affordable housing.
Correct.
Workhorse housing may or may not be as pertinent for Jackson, but affordable housing for families, I think, is something that-
Yeah, that's something we can help create.
And if we don't, it's going to change the nature of Jackson.
But the thing is, any housing, you've got to pay a, a living wage, and that's what this area does not give.
But that's not something we can affect.
Not-
Well, I'm just saying the balance, that's-
Right, right.
Well, it, we can if we do, you know, we do things to promote commercial development. The problem with the wage situation here is that we have all, you know, hospitality and, you know, service-type jobs for the most part. And so, promoting, this is something that this regional collaborative group is really focusing on, is how do we promote, you know, we don't want to reduce the, you know, the tourist industry that this, you know, this area is really built around, but it would certainly help the area in a lot of different ways to have, you know, other types of businesses, you know, low, low-impact manufacturing, software development, companies, you know, schools, higher education, um, you know, there are a lot of different types of businesses that will provide the kind of jobs and the kind of wages that would be very beneficial. So, that's-
I think one of the things, and I've thought about this for twenty years now, and we did get an extension of UNH, you can call it that, but I think if we had, if the area developed, really developed that, where teachers and professors would be coming in and living in here, we had some kind of this campus in the area as far as forestry and things like that, you know, that they can't do down in, in Durham.
I agree, I think, I think the closest thing to a silver bullet would be to have a real college campus here.
Exactly.
And if you had a northern UNH, you know, UNH campus, it would instantly be the preferred campus for all the skiers, well, for, you know, wooden ones and climbers in general.
Exactly.
Also, have a good boat tech, electricians, plumbers.
Exactly.
They can earn a good wage, but you, the kids, a lot of them might go to college, but if they get that, then they can apprentice to electrician or plumber and earn a decent wage.
I used to go down McKennett for Career Day, I can't remember, somebody used to get me to go down. I had more teachers interested in becoming electricians than I did students. Well, once they realize what the progression on, on wages was.
That's true.
I mean, it really, I mean, if you stay with it, it takes a while.
Yeah.
To go through the apprentice program, and then journeyman, and get your master's license, but then you could, you know, generate a pretty good income.
The guy that teaches welding at Berlin, his class has earned welding awards all over the state, and when those kids graduate, they have a job.
Yeah. And one of the things that you see, you know, the follow-ons that you see with, you know, campuses, especially in areas that are as nice as here, I mean, Hanover's a great example, is, you, you know, students go to school, they enjoy living in the area, when they graduate, they then wanna continue living in the area.
Yeah.
You know, working as a waiter or waitress is really not gonna cut it for very long, so they then start businesses, and, you know, so they bring in some of that other commercial development.
And the energy, it's, you know, the energy.
Then you get, you know, you have a great library in town, you have, you know, things like that, that, you know, benefit the town.
And how do we make that happen?
I don't know.
Scott, you're supposed to know.
Not aware of this, Scott.
Build it and they will.
I mean, you know, obviously, talks like UNH, you know, I, I think some sort of tax consideration, you know, probably would be available.
That would have to be on a state level, though.
But, yeah, it's, it's, I, I, you know, you don't see many private colleges starting up these days.
Well, right now, colleges are hurting.
Right, and so, getting an existing school to open up, you know, another campus in UNH would be sort of the natural.
Like a satellite.
Yeah, just a northern campus. Yeah, just a northern campus, like US, you know, University of Maine has multiple campuses.
Set, satellites, you actually do, yeah.
That kinda model, and I, I don't know what, what, you know, causes that to happen, what, you know, what it, what you
Big benefactors.
U N H needs to know or feel to, feel that they need an, you know, an additional campus, and then what you do to attract them to your area, once they do wanna set up a new campus.
It's already a business plan and, and having people with a ton of money to be able to.
Right, to endow buildings and, you know, facilities and that stuff.
You know, one thing that really was interesting to me in doing those studies for the master plan, Kathleen Sullivan had provided me with information about housing units that have sold in the past, what, five years? And, um, when you look at them, you know, you always make an assumption that Jackson housing prices are really high, um, or I make that assumption anyway. But when you look at it, in two thousand ten, the average selling price of homes was two eighty-one nine oh six. And, um, in two thousand fourteen, it was, the average was two seventy oh eighty-two.
Is there a median?
There is a median, uh, so the median for two thousand ten was two forty-three, and the median for twenty fourteen was twenty thou, was, uh, two hundred thousand and five, five hundred.
Well.
So I, I mean, I'll, I'll pass this around, but it's interesting to me that the prices are not as bad as I thought, and also in there are the acreage, so you can see, okay, so this was twelve acres sold, no wonder it was sold at that, or, or, you know, there's one in there for a million something, or there were a couple in there for a million something, and so obviously those were unusual places, but, um.
Man, you know, when, when I looked to buy a house, you know, quite a while back now, um, in the like hundred and, under two hundred range, you know, what was available was, you know.
There's some pickings. It's, exactly, it needs a lot of work.
Compared to, you go to Conway for a hundred and fifty thousand, you can probably buy a, a big farmhouse.
Yeah.
Very viable.
Well, the building, the sixty, you're gonna have a lot.
But once again, going back to what Kevin was saying, we do have two hundred and fifty or three hundred homes, uh, somewhere around, uh, two hundred thousand and less. And they can't do anything with them, you know, so, so the, you know, the, what we can do is like on the, on the, in the village district here, we've zoned it so that m- most of the buildings on the route here have become residences simply 'cause there's no parking and there's no, you know, they're, they're non-conforming. But that isn't what we want in the village. We want business and, you know, and, and so therefore we've gotta make it more viable. Like the two buildings across the street over here where they went for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars apiece, somewhere right there, they could have been shops, but they had no parking, et cetera. So, you know, they couldn't be shops. Well, we could, we could do that. We, you know, the zoning could do that. We could help businesses grow here in the, the village air, district. And we could help the two hundred and fifty homes under two hundred thousand dollars be more sellable and more, you know, viable for young families.
Yeah, I don't think there's a way we could have easily provided parking for those two.
Well, I think we could. I don't agree with you there. I, I think we've got parking here, I think we could talk to the snowflake, I think we could talk to Larry Bama, I think we could.
But not, not close to them, in other words.
But, but they don't need to be. Uh, you go to Bridgeton and there's shop after shop after shop that has zero parking down the main street.
We have parking right here, right?
Right.
Yes, and they made an attractive walkway and people go to those shops and it's a very busy village, and it's pure shops down that village, not a single house, because they can. So, no, I think we could. That, that isn't something, the parking is something the town needs to help with, you know.
The town has been dealing with parking for many, many years.
Years.
And there hasn't been a lot of viable solutions yet, and I don't know that it's gonna show up. I mean.
I don't agree with that.
I understand that you've said that, but now I'd like to say something about. You mentioned the snowflake and I was hoping at one time that the snowflake would be a viable, uh, parking use area, but they have to consider their guests first, and on a crowded day, there'd be people everywhere. So, I mean, I was amazed, uh, fourth or, no, on Sunday, the fifth, to drive into Jackson, pulled into the parking lot by the, uh, golf club, and there was ten parking spaces. The school was full, everything was full, town hall was full, they were parked all in the street and everything. You pulled in there and nobody even thought to pull in there and use that facility. So, yeah, I think there are some parking spaces around. You have to be careful of the, not tread on the toes of the businesses that are already there and use up their spaces where they need it for the people they've already attracted.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't take away from them.
And it's hard in this village, I think, with the large area that is flood plain or flood hazard area or whatever, to try to get really a walkable village community. Isn't as easy, I'm guessing, as it is in some towns. It's more spread out, partly because of current ownership maybe, but largely because of the flood possibilities.
Except you do see people walking constantly around the loop and everything else.
Yeah, but to come and walk the way, I'm, I'm thinking about Bridgeton walking is, it's, it's a lot tighter shopping.
The way in a, in Bridgeton, they have a parking space behind Main Street.
Right.
And, uh, that's where they use, but even Littleton has parking meters.
Right.
And you have to go behind Main Street, but their Main Street is very busy.
But that's, you know, buildings are almost right side by side, all the way along.
And that's what Bridgeton has, is the volume
Yeah.
of shops.
Yeah.
And we're not likely to achieve that, as far as I can imagine.
We can't build them now.
Right.
It's just not.
Nothing else can be built, built here, but the, you know, we, we have kinda pushed it so that they're, they've become residences rather than, you know, the, rather than shops. Uh, you know, the, these, these two across the street, you know, were, would have been wonderful shops.
Were they ever shops before? Yeah, I know. I think they've always been residences.
But they've been residents forever. Those two houses had been residents.
Well, right, but I'm saying that, that isn't necessarily what we want as a village.
No, but I'm just saying, those two have always been, Rena Meserve and Irene and Donnie Chase lived there for years.
Across the street, well, so was mine, and, you know, I was able to turn it into a commercial. The next one over, it would be better as a, a, a shop than it is a house. I certainly don't like living there. You know, but it would, it would be a, a more viable shop, and, and I think we could.
Are you prevented from converting it to a shop?
No. Well, Flossie's went from a residence to commercial.
Right.
But I don't have parking.
And that had the parking and also the high ground. You go right next to it, you go to the grazing garage and you start getting into water problems. But there's just enough elevation at Flossie's to, uh.
Well, they had to, uh, I remember he had to, uh, um, ask for that parking. That's, that parking is on the street. And he wasn't, that isn't, you know, that wasn't approved for his parking. That's not his property. He had to ask the town for that, to allow that to be, Ted did. Because those are, those are street, you know, that's street parking. That's not.
I know, but.
And same with me. If I turn the house into a shop, I don't have any parking. I.
But that is implied by the town. I think that's privately proud over here.
But we do have a lot of land here.
Yeah.
We, we do have the farmer's market, you know, I know it's River Conservation. You know, the farmer's market area with the snowflake, I think they'd work with people on something like that, you know, for six, you know, some days out of the week or a few days. They might very well do that. Uh, Larry Bama's somebody to talk to, you know.
You mean to have parking there?
Sure. Yeah, right now, he's got a, 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 a building.
But I mean, it's a snowflake.
Right, at the farmer's market area.
Okay.
What they use. I mean, there's a, you know.
'Cause I think people have approached them on parking before.
They say, you lost the parking at the frost shop.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of people park.
Right, that was great.
And they always let people pack there.
Where's that?
At the frost shop.
Oh, frost shop, I'm sorry.
This town in the winter used to be one busy place.
Right.
That tavern used to rock, and they were, they all parked at the frost shop. I mean, I'm just saying, that's where they found.
Right, makes it more difficult, yeah. And Larry Bama, I know, had hoped to put in some craft shops up in his area, but that never really flew. I don't know if it was lack of interest, lack, whatever, but I think there could have been parking available for that.
So did we have any, beyond Betsy's comments, any other edits to the P D I report? I, when I went through it, I didn't see anything. I mean, it's wrong, but. And Larry, when you have more time to go through it, do you have any?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'll do.
Just.
And just email you.
Yeah, and I'll pass it on to, um, actually Teresa.
Okay.
We'll then pass it on.
And keep this so you know what the history is of writing back and forth about it, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the P D I report? Thank you. Background reports for the master plan. And I understand a lot of it's in.
I put mine in.
Yeah.
I gave you mine too.
I just, yeah, handed mine in to Sarah today.
I had a little mistake in mine, so.
I've copied it.
We have time to.
Well, I just wanted, it was just a question when Sarah goes to do it, but just a question of turning two things around and changing the date, that's all, nothing else.
And what Sarah said, we have the rough draft
Yep.
ready for our August meeting.
Yep.
I circulated the, um, thing about housing sales. What the last one had, um, was also information about lot sales and, um, commercial sales. And I haven't found a good source for that. Does anyone have any suggestions?
I saw.
I spoke with Kathleen Sullivan head, but she gave me all the material she's already had.
I saw Jason Hall today and, uh.
That's right, I could work through his material.
He doesn't have that, just at his fingertips. I mean, it's hours and hours of.
Yeah, Julie did send me, you know, sheets and sheets and sheets of Jason's stuff, and I haven't really gone through that. I suppose I could.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's the thing, and he doesn't have the time to just do that for us, so, um, we'll have to.
Well, I'll do what I can on it.
Try to put it together as best we can.
Yeah, okay.
Now, what do you, you're trying to nail down how lot sales over the last so many years and?
Yeah, I mean, Kathleen, because I've been telling you for five years, I think that's pretty good. I don't think we should go all the way back to two thousand two or three or something. But if we can get approximately a five-year record, I think that might be okay.
The girls in the office don't.
They don't have access to, no, they don't.
Yeah, yeah, they wouldn't have that, would they?
They did send me volumes of papers from Jason.
Yeah. I remember asking Kara about non-conforming lots, if she could tell me how many there were, and she said I could, but it would be a whole lot of work.
Yeah.
And she didn't want to. That was, you know, basically it. You know, it wasn't even in our budget, you know, that was how long.
They'll tell you one, Dubby's, they should never have torn the house down. Care for Dubby's house, never, 'cause that sure is one non-conforming lot. They had just put in this septic in.
Okay. Um, the review of the, uh, any change, possible changes to subdivision regulations. And we've got a nice printout, then thought everybody got a copy of it. Did you get a copy?
Yeah, people are, yeah.
Yep.
How about, before we do that, since Kevin's still here, how about seeing if we can just at least discuss his comment?
You wanna talk about him?
Rather than make him stay here till midnight, 'cause we know we're gonna be here till midnight.
That's true. You all are gonna be here till midnight. You're gonna lose both of the minutes. Um, setbacks, that's a good discussion. I'd have, let's see, so you're talking setbacks from the road, uh, to allow a dwelling unit or structure that is, now, let's stick to the dwelling units for now, because structures turned into dwelling units that are non-conforming are a whole nother can of worms. But whether they can expand the volume of nonconformity.
And you're saying primarily along the road.
That's a part of it, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm.
Well, be like putting a porch on the front
Yeah.
as opposed to putting something on the back.
Exactly, porch or, or blowing out a wall to make, you know, the room bigger or something, instead, you know, um, you know, as, as I said, it does get complicated. What do you allow, what do they allow? Do you allow them to go to second floor or apart on the second floor? But I, I just, um, you know, just, I've been at this job for most of the year now, and, um, I'm just trying to think right now, you know, we've got one house right now that they gotta rip a deck off. The house is beautiful. It's just because they built it in the setback, just by seven feet or so.
And they couldn't get anything from the Z B eight?
Yeah, and it doesn't affect anybody. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't affect anything.
And the house right above it is closer to the road.
And it actually, and it actually. Right, and it actually adds value to the house the way it is now. So now without this deck on, it's gonna be like this straight wall and, you know, that, that's number one thing.
So they're, they're ripping the deck off.
Well, eventually, they got last thing to go to Supreme Court in the state of Maine, I'm sure, and otherwise it's gonna come back to me and I'm gonna have to.
But there's an existing deck, they don't.
No. And they went, they went around it a very not good way, in one set of plans and then they.
And then they add it in after they get approval.
Yeah, so that wasn't right, you know, but.
So, you know what I'm saying?
I've started ripping the deck off.
So let's go back to existing dwelling units
Yes.
that are nonconforming
Right, and.
because they're too close to the front setback.
Right, exactly. Either by just a little bit or half the house, I mean, it's all different circumstances.
Right.
But, you know, and the only thing they can do, you know, like to improve their house, is either re-sign it, new windows, new doors, but they can't expand anywhere. Like they can't push a deck out or, like I said, a wall or go up or add another room in that, in the.
'Cause anybody asked to go out back rather than
Out front.
going further into the setback.
Right, but sometimes, yeah, sometimes they, they wanna go out front, you know, um, and I understand.
How's the field of one? Why do we have a fifty-foot setback? It was, it was for snow.
You know, a fifty-foot setback was set.
We don't need it.
I've, I've heard two things. One was because of snow power.
Right.
Now, you know, snowbanks might be twenty feet off the road at the most, you know, so there's still plenty of room, you know. Another thing too was, I heard something about a possible road widening. That's not gonna happen anywhere in this town. Maybe down in the district, something, who knows, but that'd be, that'd be great 'cause you could add parking spaces, but I don't see that happening either, so that, that's not realistic.
These setbacks were put in in the early seventies, I think.
You know, well, yeah, and they, yeah, I don't know, like, who initiated this, you know, I'm saying, way back, I don't even know what it was. But I just see, it really hurts, you know, the people who have these nonconforming houses. There's plenty of them, you know, you go up to the old dump there, that whole little development in there, last year, two Z B eight.
Right.
Two people went to the Z B eight, they both were denied.
That's the perfect example.
And they just wanted, and they just wanted to improve their homes, put new foundations under and like, you know, put a little room on something, and do it.
It was denied.
Now, yeah, now that I have.
It was awful, I couldn't believe it.
You guys changed the zoning from fifty. You guys changed the zoning from fifty feet to twenty-five feet on the corner lots.
Yeah.
Actually, there's one house now that can actually do something.
Yeah, that's Bowringer probably.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Has anyone informed him of that?
He knows.
Good.
He knows, he's got three plans already.
Good.
And he's very happy.
That is the perfect example.
That is a good example.
It's balloon. There, there's a little one, as you first turn on, on the right, it's the tiniest little house you've ever seen, it's beautifully kept, but what blows me away is across the street is the Candy Cane Lane House, they weren't allowed to put a deck because of the River Conservation District, they were allowed to put one on the other side. But a deck does not hurt the River Conservation District, nor does a building. What hurts the River Conserva- Conservation District is what this beautiful little house, he can't build one foot onto it, and he was told he couldn't by ZBA. But he cut every tree and every plant all the way down to the river, and it's neat as a pin, and he's doing more damage to the river than probably anybody around. And he doesn't know it.
I thought the River Conservation District said you shouldn't cut the trees.
Well, whether he, he's cut every brush anyway, there's, there's no lawn even, and he can do that. So, but, but it makes no sense not to allow him to add on to his house, because that doesn't hurt the river. I mean, what is the purpose of the River Conservation District? It's to help to preserve the river. You know, or if he increased septic, yes, then, then I'd see that, you know, he's got a problem, but he can't do anything with that. And the, the other examples across the street is, is the old Peakewich residence, which he built before the zoning, and it's a massive, beautiful house. The one behind Bowringer is this massive, beautiful house, because they built prior to the zoning, and now you've got these little camps, and he literally couldn't put on a four-by-six bathroom. And it makes no sense for the town, it makes no sense for housing. These are, you know, these would be great, you know, affordable houses.
Well, and I think that's the way to look at it, it's not so much the individual property owner's rights, because it is what it is, it is the property as it is, but the, you know, what it means to the town to allow these properties to be upgraded, you know, in different ways.
It would help the town tremendously if, if these two hundred and fifty, under two hundred thousand dollar homes could improve. It would just help us tremendously, I think, it would help the taxes.
Yeah.
You know, and so the, the gentleman with that little tiny, tiny little one-room house, we'll never get another dime out of him. And, and, and he can never use it for much, and he can never sell it for, it doesn't make sense for the town.
I think we, it would seem to me that we would need to have some sort of boundaries as.
You have to have a clear cutoff point to make it fair for everyone.
That's right.
So you ha- you have to.
So you, you could say that if it's non-conforming, you know, up to a certain square footage. Three thousand square meters point a number of.
Yeah.
Half of it, so anything under three thousand feet could be, you know, could be expanded to three thousand feet, even if that increases the non-conformity of the property, I'm not going.
I'm sensitive to the idea of infringing on the Ri- River Conservation District, because I think water quality, over time, is going to become an issue. The water supply for downtown Jackson is surface water. If we have an accident anyplace up Route sixteen, Town of Jackson's Village District water is gonna be a problem, and they run a lot of tank trucks up through the notch. We have one spill, we're gonna be out of water for a while. It'll clean itself, yes, but I, so I'm sensitive to the water side, but pushing into the setback from the roads, I, I think that anybody with a design idea can come up with an innovative design idea to get them what they need or want, not necessarily going towards the water, but go towards either we give them some relief at the property line edges or towards the road. Then they can expand the volume of their dwelling unit, maybe add a bedroom, a bathroom, whatever it is they need, or upgrade the kitchen to make it a more valuable. I would ask everybody to think about this idea of pushing towards the water. I'd like to keep our waters clean as.
We need to push away from the water, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if these, if we're gonna start thinking about ways to help these smaller, less expensive dwelling units become nicer.
Exactly.
If we were to simply change the setback from fifty, say forty feet, would that make an appreciable difference?
Yeah, that would make a lot, a lot of big difference on a couple homes.
Now, that to me would be the simplest, fairest way to go at it, would be just to reduce the setback.
Setbacks.
Along the road only, or on other?
No, just along the road.
Yeah, I think we want to talk about.
The fifty-foot.
Yeah, because you're near your neighbors, and you don't want to start pushing that.
Yeah, the twenty-five on each side, that's great, because you need that. You don't want your neighbor on top of it like that, but the road thing, I think, you know, it's something that, you know, you could take a lot of houses and try to figure out, you know, if they, if you did change that, what would happen, you know what I'm saying? But I'd like to see, I, I don't know if you could still keep new construction at fifty feet, I don't know if there's a way to do that.
Well, I think, I think if we decide that fifty feet, we can't come up with a rational reason for, you know, to do.
I think it was aesthetics.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, as I said, to the fairway, it would be just to reduce it. Come, you know, for everybody.
Yeah, good, yeah. But what I see, in some of these new homes, especially like on Papa Tyrell, all these grant, well, so-called grant law lots, they're just small lots. They can only get two-bedroom septic approval. But these houses that are going on, they're, they're, they're full basements, full first floor,
Mm-hmm.
second floor, there's only two bedrooms, but they got the library, the office, the study.
The sewing room.
Yeah, oh, there's other stuff, and I know the minute I do my last inspection, those two rooms turn into bedrooms, all of a sudden they got four bedrooms, and I know that's going on.
Sure. They can't sell it, it's that, but it's going on.
That's why I like to still see, well, I don't know that, you know, if they have to still be at fifty feet, but whatever, like I said, we have to, well, you guys have to look at it.
It just seems made, if we reduce the setback only for non-conforming homes.
Right.
So someone that has forty feet now has, say, an extra ten feet to work with, what about the person who's right at the fifty-foot mark and can't expand any further?
Yeah.
Otherwise, they have some.
Yeah, because she wants to come, right, you gotta.
So it just, to me, just, we go from fifty feet to something else.
If you look at a lot of towns, it's usually twenty-five or thirty in the front, you know, anywhere twenty to thirty, the sides are fifteen to twenty-five.
That is true.
Yeah, and that's what most towns do, is fifteen to twenty-five on the sides.
Oh, that's twenty-five.
Well, I, I have no problem with our twenty-five-foot side, sideline.
No, I think that's good, that's, that's a good spot.
It is, and that puts you fifty feet, and it's safer fire-wise, and there's a number of good things. Could we do something with the volume? Okay, whatever you're.
So many percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how that works out.
If you have a wide lot with your structure on it, and you want to come in, is there some way we can say, okay, you can come ten percent? Rather than give them a footage, or you can't come beyond, you can't do ten percent, and a long skinny thing up there, but you could do ten percent of the front of the structure.
I think that gets complicated. I think it's simple to say forty-foot setback.
We do, when, the whole volume thing becomes a discussion, so what's, what's concluded in the volume, and we had that discussion and debate before, I mean, I was thinking along the same lines too, but that's, just again, the reducing the setback, you know, unless we, unless we have, you know, beyond just aesthetics, not that that's not a, you know, an important consideration, but, you know, if we can't, if we don't have some other fire safety, et cetera, reason to really justify fifty feet, I think looking at something a little less would be the.
I think we can justify something less than fifty feet at the front.
Can, can we, can we consider something like, on, on, on volume, so, we don't want McMansions on a small lot, that, that just doesn't look right, I've seen it in Massachusetts, where they, they ripped down the existing house and they built this thing that's just massive, and there's no land whatsoever. So our setbacks can stop that, can we do a height? In other words, a second story on, you know? Well, we have, thirty-five is huge, thirty-five, you can build three stories. Like in my shop, I would have never allowed, if I were on the planning board at the time, me to go to three stories. It, it just, it's too big, it's too tall for a little lot, i- i- it's just too big a building, you know, for a little lot, but, you know, at the time, I could. And that, the, so, I mean, could we, you know, cut it off at two stories and, you know, what percentage or?
Well, if, if we were to go from fifty feet to forty feet, that's a twenty percent allowed increase in volume. That's pretty substantial.
Well, no, only if, if your building is.
That ten, that, that extra ten feet would be, well, it wouldn't be twenty percent of the volume, but it would be.
Yeah, it wouldn't at all.
It'd be.
Ten feet, yeah.
You'd be, you'd still be spending the additional volume, you know, you'd only be allowing ten feet of extra.
And the heights wise doesn't make any sense either, because some of those houses on Tyrell, they're built into the, you know, the first level, built into the, the mountains.
Below ground. And that's considered seller.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, there's a house up on North Hampshire Ridge, it's gotta be four or five stories high.
I mean, a house that's not already bounded on the sides, even if it's, can, can a house that's not, you know, say a house has got fifty feet on either side, but has less than fifty feet to the road, can it expand sideways under it, or is that increasing the non-conformity?
Yes.
Because there's greater volume?
Oh, in other words, that falls in the fifty feet, the?
Well, in other words, the house is, it's, it's thirty feet from the road.
Right.
So it's, it's non-conforming.
It's non-conforming.
But it's got, you know, it's, it's got fifty feet.
On either side.
On either side, can it expand?
It can.
They say that is an expansion of the volume of non-conformity.
Yeah, that you can't expand.
That you can't do, but you could step back to the fifty-foot line and then go wide.
But I can see how, you know, you're concerned that, you know, even say, give you an extra ten feet of setback.
Doesn't help.
Some situations might allow someone to really, you know, go this, towards the road a little bit, but then also expand.
Right, they could do that as well.
You know, sideways at the same time, and then potentially create something that is oversized for the lot.
We've got to try to give that two hundred and fifty or so houses some relief, I think, somewhere, a- and, and we should look at different, you know, possibilities over ti- you know, maybe in the next year or two, you know, to come up with. So I have read where towns have done, you know, so many percent of, of non-conformity, you know, they're allowed to build up to, you know, fifty percent of the non-conformity.
You see setbacks as kind of a divisive topic, I mean, you haven't had one of those for a while, so.
I don't think we can wait one or two years.
Well, I, personally, I don't want to, I happen to fall in that situation. I'm in the situation where I cannot build onto my house, I live in an unsafe building, my, my upstairs is not up to code, it, and I would, it can't, I would have to go to ZBA to bring it up, even though our.
No, it's also doesn't work.
I'd get right in there and do an inspection.
Just to confirm it, that's awful.
But it, you know, it's a not, it's an, it's an existing building, and it's just not up to code at all, it's not even safe to be on that second floor, you can't get out of it, and I can't change it, we have one ordinance that says, well, yes, you can bring it up to code, but the second ordinance says it falls in setbacks.
Well, here's the thing.
But you could have egress windows. You can put egress windows in.
Windows, but I still can't get.
No, but you're talking about life safety now.
Yeah.
Right, that's what you were just talking about.
Right.
Okay, you can have.
I could put egress.
You could have safe egress.
Correct, but I still can't bring it up to code.
What's code?
Code is, is like a, a ceiling that's seven foot tall, and code is, is the insulation in, in the ceiling, up to that, you know, that's a, you know.
Energy costs.
Yeah, energy costs, what?
Those are choices.
No, they're not choices, the, the house exists, and we live in it. Though it's not a choice, I can't change it.
Well, here's the, here's the thing to consider, if we're proposing eventually to change the setback in the rural residential area to a forty-foot setback, why not consider in the village area where we've got, you know, numerous houses that are right close, whether Snowflake or those two residences or whatever, why not have a twenty-five or thirty-foot setback allowed in the village?
That makes sense.
Except, of course, along Route sixteen, where we might not want that, we might have a.
Above town.
Yeah.
Right, I agree with you.
You might have a, a village district and then a rural commercial or something, rather where you'd have a forty-foot setback or like commercials.
Or a light commercial or something, yeah. I, I agree with you on that, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, can we talk about this?
Yeah.
Continue talking about this?
Yes, we're not gonna decide anything tonight, right?
No, no, I don't mean that, I meant, let's not just put it off, is what I'm saying, let's come to some kind of a conclusion and get it over with and done with and get things going in town.
I think setback, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, in that PDI report, I think, looking at setbacks, or setbacks is one of the tools, the basis that we could use to promote development.
Our recommendation, yeah, a good point.
And I'd like to say that a thought is, there's nothing wrong with small houses. Not everybody has to live in a twenty-five hundred, three thousand square foot house. FHA, we were building for, I think, thirteen hundred square feet, they were modest, but they were livable. Now, they were new, they had a new kitchen and new facilities. I would like to see, the, what is it, two hundred and fifty, under two hundred thousand dollar houses in Jackson get upgraded. They don't all have to expand.
Right, right.
In the Sunday paper, the new houses, they're being smaller, they're really almost like.
Small has become an archetypal.
Yeah, that's what they're, the whole, and I mean small.
Oh, yeah.
They're like this stair.
The bedfalls, the Murphy bedfalls, the table goes up when you add, but, okay, I, I don't want that small, but a, a modest house doesn't have to expand, it can be upgraded.
Could, could we look instead of something that allows expansion, something that allows decks and porches and that type of structure as.
Dormers, I think.
As not help that second floor and give you some headspace that.
Give you space.
Well, that kind of way.
Doesn't go, doesn't go outside the footprint.
Right.
Of the existing structure. It doesn't really go above the ridge line of the existing structure. But you kick out a shed dormer or something, and it gives you some more space in a room upstairs that might be, you know, under the rafters and pretty tight.
And that, those are ideas that we need to look at, you know, so what.
Good thoughts.
Would, would the builder mention these ideas to people?
I'm sorry?
Would a builder mention these ideas to whoever was fixing up their house?
Well, one of those, you can't increase the volume, that's why.
Yeah, you can't increase the volume, you can't do.
You can't get dormers in the way it's written right.
Right.
Yeah, I can't dorm my attic. Volume of non-conformity.
My second floor.
Yeah, I guess.
I think there's.
Which doesn't make sense, you know, not to let someone dormer a second floor.
And John, we may have to get back to you on this idea of when the boards will come together.
Yeah.
But I think it's a great idea. It worked, I, I went to one, um, must have been two years ago. But it's always productive to sit down with the other people in town that share in town service.
The only thing, you know, we gotta get the master plan done.
And that's what we should, uh, get ahead of course. So hopefully, Sarah said she will email a copy of the rough draft of what she has, so.
Yeah, I gave you mine.
I'll get you a copy from the office or.
Well, if you get it, they'll just put it in the box.
Okay, but if we go ahead and read it before next meeting, then we can sit down and have one of our really good, intelligent discussions, without having, but you know, I may even have to read the thing in order to talk about it. Hopefully, we'll have it in hand and we'll talk about it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
How about the subdivision regulations? How about the subdivision regulations? Uh, how about the subdivision regulations, how about the subdivision regulations, are we not gonna finish that?
Sorry, we lost it.
We lost it.